Okay, welcome to this special meeting of the Norfolk City Council on September 14th, 2023. I will call the meeting to order. And to begin, call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. And I think Councilman Clausen wants to say a word before a moment of silence about a dear friend that we just lost.
Yeah, I would just like to add, Rob Merrill's wife, Jan Merrill, passed away yesterday. He was a longtime council member here, and she's worked in the community for a long time. So in our thoughts today, if we could reflect on that a little bit, too, I'm sure their family would appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing there, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Rule call, please.
Branquist, Arms.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Snorton.
Here.
Clausen.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here. Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion second. No discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting on the affirmative, motion carries.
Then I'd look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
Make a motion to approve the full agenda?
Second.
Okay, motion second to approve the full agenda. If no further discussion, please vote.
There we go. All council members present voting on the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, that takes us to item number eight under Public Hearings and Related Action. As we're all aware, these public hearings are held involving the budget for the next fiscal year. So to open the hearing on this particular item, item number eight, to review the city of Norfolk's fiscal year 2023 to '24 municipal budget. And to kick off the hearing and present information on the budget, we'll hear from Andy Colvin, our city administrator. Andy.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today. This is the, I guess, the culmination of months of work, both for staff and you all as well. Lots of meetings, lots of discussions, both formal and informal, have brought us here today to have a public hearing and present the city's annual appropriations ordinance. Before I get started with just a presentation, I'm gonna, Randy would like to comment on a kind of mishap in the public notice for the budget, but also a solution for how that's going to be handled. So I'm gonna let Randy address that.
Yeah, when I was getting ready for the meeting about a half hour ago, I pulled up the hearing notice. And at the bottom of the hearing notice, it has breakdown of property tax, and that's two different numbers, real and personal and real property tax required for bonds is one number. And then the notice, that's $5,812,317. And then the next number is personal and real property tax required for all other purposes, which in the notice is $1,244,206. Those numbers are flip-flopped. What should be the real and personal property tax required for bonds is $1,244,206. And the personal and real property tax required for all other purposes should be the $5,812,317. When we discovered this error, we called the state auditor's office. He said what we need to do is, within 20 days of adoption of the budget, which will be on Monday, when we approve the appropriations ordinance, and these numbers, the appropriations ordinance is correct. So when we approve that, within 20 days after that, we need to publish a notice in the newspaper explaining the changes made from the budget hearing notice to what was adopted. It'd be somewhere as to what we would do if we actually made a change to the budget from what was proposed. In this case, we're not really making a change. We just got the numbers flipped around, but we'd treat it just like that. There's no action needed today, really no action required on Monday, other than to do the appropriations ordinance, which is in the Monday's agenda package correctly, which will be different than this. And then we'll publish a notice explaining the difference within 20 days.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you, Randy. Well, today I have a PowerPoint as I normally do. It's a little bit longer because I did add some information in here that I think will help clarify some things based on some questions I've been getting in between the work sessions and where we are today. But before I start, I really, I can't take credit for this budget. You know, my role in this is really just to kind of oversee the process and be a part of the meetings, get the questions posed, and make some recommendations. You know, a lot of the work that goes into putting this document together and this overall budget really has to go to the city staff. And in particular, a few people that I'm gonna name right now, Randy Gates, our finance officer, Sheila Rios, our city accountant, Brianna Durst, our city clerk, Melissa Durecki, she's another accountant with the city, Kelly Zvitek, and then Lyle Lott, in particular. I'd like to thank them tremendously for their help in preparing this document, organizing everything, capital improvement plan, all that process. None of this could happen without their dedication and their hours and hours and hours worth of work that they put into what we have here today. So I'm gonna go ahead and get going here. So just with some highlights of the budget, I wanted to pick out a few things here, just to clarify, because there has been some changes and discussions since then, so I want to make sure we're on the same page. So the overall citywide budget, so this is all funds, has increased 12.67% primarily due to debt issuance for street improvements, water plant upgrades, and a collector well, as well as for WPC. So that debt service is primarily due to infrastructure enhancements and improvements that will be felt throughout the community. Uh-oh, I just lost it. Okay, we're back. The proposed budget includes a 1.12 cent tax, property tax levy reduction. It includes a 3.5% cost of living adjustment for city employees. Just to note, in comparison to the last year, the 12-month CPI change was 9%. Employees received a 6% cost of living adjustment at that time, which resulted in a 3% reduction in rural wages. The budget also includes a $5 million bond issue for street projects. Now, again, that is utilizing existing revenue sources that we pulled with no tax increase proposed to pay for that. So for that $450,000 annual debt service, we are proposing to use 200,000 of council priority dollars, which will be going into the CHAF fund, as well as a transfer from CHAF to the general fund, which will be reduced by 250,000. So that money will stay in CHAF fund to help pay for that bond. And as well, this budget makes progress toward restoring the 16% general fund balance. If you remember here, last year, that fund balance was reduced to pay off this building, to pay off that debt. So that did result in a decrease, but this budget year is taking that up a little bit more, up to about 13.9% at the end of this fiscal year is what we anticipate. So, overall total expenditures comparison, this is gonna give you a little bit of a comparison for the last few years that we are up again, as I mentioned, 12.67% over last year. The total expenditures for all funds this year are $133,015,460. Feel free to stop me as well if you have any questions along the way, Council. So a history of our total budget, just for some perspective, this is going back to the 2014 and '15 fiscal year. We've had ups and downs throughout the years, but certainly with the investments that we're seeing and proposing in this current budget, it is higher than what we've seen before. I think a lot of that is due to just cost increases, things are costing more to build and do work, as well as additional investments that the city council is making into the community and our infrastructure. General fund revenue, this is just another overview that we've got. You see the big pie chart there. The blue is the sales tax. 40% of our general fund is funded by sales tax. So this year, we are anticipating $11,585,869 in sales tax, $6,573,000 in other revenue, which would be for more year permits, fees charged, miscellaneous revenue. Property tax is about 20% of our overall budget and general fund, as well as our MPPD lease, which has stayed relatively flat here for the last number of years. Sales tax revenue trends, as you can see, I'll note, this was interesting. If you look in 2016 to 2018, that's when the city had that local option sales tax approved for the library. Our current collections we have now have exceeded those amounts that we were collecting back then. So we're very pleased to see our sales tax growth over these last five to six years. We've seen that in particular here over these last couple of years, growing at a very, very good rate. I think from a city standpoint, we're very reliant on sales tax, and I think this is indicative of spending and how well businesses are doing in the community. I know there is cost increases. I know things are more expensive now, but of course, you know, this means people are spending money, businesses being done in Norfolk, and we're seeing the results of that in our sales tax, which also helps to control our reliance on property taxes as well. MPPD lease, as you can see, with the exception of that jump in 2018, '19, which is primarily due to how payments were received by the city, there was a little blip there that brought revenue up, but other than that, it's remained relatively flat. And I don't think we foresee any rate increases that I've heard from MPPD going forward that would change this. Any growth we have had is primarily due to actual load growth, so additional usage of electricity through new homes, businesses, and industries. More historical trends for you. So this is our CHAF fund. As you can see as well, that has fluctuated over the years and remained relatively flat here over the last several. This primarily funds our street maintenance activities, building overlay, armor coating, street repairs, concrete repairs by contract, as well as funding some of the bonds that we've got to pay for Benjamin, First Street, Michigan, and those as well. The city's assessed value went up 8.3%. Our original budget projections were just about 6%, so we did go up more, which enabled us to reduce our levy a little bit more and also helped to put a little bit more into fund balance to keep our long-term financial plan sound. So this gives you a trend of where our assessed value has been over the last 10 years or so. We always like to be compared to other cities in Nebraska, and where do we rank? So this is for our levy rate. We've remained in third place of comparable cities for as long as I've been here, and probably predating me. Scotts, Bluff, and Carney are the ones below us in our sister cities. So property tax overview, this is just one we'd like to show, just so the taxpayer knows where their dollars go. So on a $100,000 home, your city Norfolk tax request per $100,000 is $304.30. And you can see the other taxing entities that you have there. The city of Norfolk makes up about 15% of your property tax bill. General fund expenditures, we've seen more investment in some of our other activities. You'll see street maintenance and parks and rec has increased a little bit over these years, and that's due to some more investments that we've seen. Ending balance, you'll see there at about 12.8% and police and fire, police at about 22% and fire at about 15%. So this just gives you an overview of where all the money goes. I will note, fleet services here, a year or two ago, did separate out from street maintenance. Those two worked originally together, and we did separate those out so that we can help track some of the work being done and the maintenance work being done in our equipment and machinery. Enterprise fund expenditures, this is one where we're maintaining a vast majority of our revenue that we get does go into capital. So this would be your water fund, your sewer fund, solid waste transfer station. Over 60% of that of those funds does go into capital expenditures, with 20% into operations and maintenance, and only 12% into personnel. So this is one that, due to some questions that we've been getting here over the last number of weeks about the city's debt, this has been an ongoing discussion, I think, in the community, but I think we want to share some facts here and give everybody a little bit of perspective as to what this debt is. So this chart right here is a comparison of Norfolk to other cities. And you can see, we are right in the middle of the pack. So Norfolk is at four different levels. So the first one, where it just says Norfolk, that is where we are right now, or as of the preparation of these charts. As of the end of this fiscal year, or the beginning of the next fiscal year, at 10/1 of '23, we are maintaining that same level. We are about the same. And then you'll see by the end of '24, because of the projects and the debt service that will be issued, that we anticipate will be issued throughout the year, will go up to just over 60 million. And then that number will again go up by the end of 2025. So as you can see, we're not, comparison to other cities in Nebraska, we are not, we're right in about the middle of the pack. And even with the projected increases in that that we're seeing over the next couple of years, we're still going to be in the middle of the pack, unless, of course, you see those other communities change, which anybody can predict what they will or won't do.
So there, Andy, so Columbus, Fremont, Plano, Carney, that's where they're at today?
That is of the last budget report that our staff found. They have to report this to the state. So this is where we got that. Isn't that right, Randy? They have to report this?
Yes. On the budget forms you send in, there's a place to report bonded indebtedness. They include principal and then interest. And this would be the principal amount that's reported on those state budget forms from last year. So this would be what these cities had in debt as of October 1, 2022. And then we've got October 1, 2022, in the first blue column to the left, and that'll be October 1, 2023, as Andy said, the projected for the next two years. So these numbers will change for the other cities, but we don't know what those numbers are gonna change to, whether they go up or down.
I think it's fair to say, too, that I think Fremont, Plano, Carney in particular, they are growing communities, and they're investing in their communities because of that growth. And so I think, you go on the other end, you know, in Hastings and North Platte, maybe not so much. So in my opinion, I think what this shows is that there's an investment in your community, and that will have investments that will keep turning over at more activity in your community to help improve the lives of people that live there. So another one, so we're gonna look at some historical bonded indebtedness. Now, this is today's dollars. So this has been adjusted to today's dollars. As you can see, so the top one there, the yellow line, is general obligation bonds. So relatively flat, and even went down. This goes back to 1996 to 2010. You'll see that jump up. That was Memorial Field Aqua Venture, that project that went up, and those general obligation bonds. Then you'll see that go down, and then here in the last couple of years, you've seen that tick back up with our proposed additional investments that we're doing. And then the bottom, you'll see the revenue bonds in today's dollars. Again, the revenue bonds would be for your water, your sewer, your transfer station, those kinds of things. Your enterprise funds would be revenue bonds. Are there any questions about this?
It's kind, when you follow the revenue bonds, it does kind of follow the trend of what was happening at that particular time in our community. Because if you look at 1996 through '98, Norfolk was booming with housing at that time. Started slowing down in '05, and then the market crashed for housing in '09, 2010. And you can see a drastic reduction in the revenue bonds. And I'm guessing that because of lack of development at that time? So I'm assuming, right? I mean, is that how you would, when I say development, I mean infrastructure going in because things-
Yeah, for the city, for the city-led.
Right, right.
Yep.
I would just make the correlation, too. Andy, you've mentioned before, increased sales tax revenue. I don't think those two things are isolated. The more we've invested in expanding infrastructure to accommodate commercial and industrial growth and housing growth, the higher sales tax revenues we've seen come in. And we've had to make those investments to garner that growth. And so I think it's a cycle that is logical when you go back to '96 and see how the community has invested in the past, so.
Well, it also follows a trend, too, that things wear out, and they kind of follow a 20 or 10 trend. So I think you'll see, if you even went back further into the '70s, when there was a lot of activity going on in Norfolk, and you'll see it go down in the '80s and peak again in the '90s. So I think he's, I think once his infrastructure goes in and gets pushed out to where it needs to stop, then it waits until it catches up. And then if you continue to grow, you're gonna see more growth. So, anyway.
So this is our general obligation debt as a percentage of our assessed value. Full disclosure, Randy can probably explain this chart. Randy and Sheila can explain this one a little bit better than I can. So I'm gonna maybe let them explain what this chart means and the significance of it.
This takes our GEO debt and subtracts out special assessment debt, because that's gonna be paid with the special assessments that we get on the property that the bonds were issued to do the infrastructure for. And legally, that's all we can use, that those special assessment payments for until the bond issue's paid off. I believe that's the only thing that's subtracted out, isn't it, Sheila? Or is there other stuff from the GEO debt?
Is this the one where the restricted, that's in the debt service fund, is restricted out?
Oh, yeah. And this also excludes the cash we've got set aside in the debt service fund for this. So this is the net debt we have, that we don't have GEO debt, that we don't have cash on hand for, or we've got special assessments receivable that will be coming in and paying it. And then that's expressed as a percentage of assessed value. And that's a thing that the bond rating agencies, for instance, look at fairly closely. They wanna see how your net GEO debt is compared to your assessed valuation.
I think, too, this says we're in a good position.
So essentially, you're saying this is debt, you've excluded any debt that is gonna be covered by special assessments, like street improvement districts or whatnot, sewer and water assessments. And-
Yes.
Does that include, does that include debt service that's gonna be picked up by tapping fees?
No.
No.
This would be something that does include, the debt service fund in general is primarily paid with property tax. About that big bump you see in '21, '22 timeframe, those are the City Highway Allocation Fund pledged bonds. There was about 20 and a quarter million of those issued for the work that's being done now.
Right, right. So essentially, you're saying this-
Those will be paid from City Highway Allocation Fund monies and not property tax. But it shows on this chart, because we could use those City Highway Allocation Fund monies for other things besides just this debt. Whereas the special assessment receivables, all we can use those for is to pay those special assessment bonds they were issued for. So this is money that will be coming from non-rate payers. Mainly on here, you're seeing that will be paid from either City Highway Allocation Funds or property tax.
Or, so essentially what Andy was talking about earlier in his presentation, the 200,000 that came out from council priority dollars, and then the additional money that's gonna be coming out of the CHAF fund to finance these bonds here, that we're talking about when you say tax.
Yeah, that money is on this chart, that $5 million of bonds is on this chart.
And I think then out of this tax, out of the property tax, what we kicked back into to help fund our CHAF budget, I think that's additional, about 1.5 million? Steve, is that right? Or 1.2? Right around there, because I think we contributed about 4.5. We get about 3.7% from CHAF. So that'd be about 1.2 additional that we put towards streets. What I'm saying, when you're talking about it, you're talking about, what's financed through property tax, and that would be the additional money we kicked in to pay for our street improvements besides the CHAF, right? And then the 200,000 that will go into this next fiscal from council priority dollars.
Yes, 200,000 would be paying the part of that jump up you're seeing in those last years. And then, exactly.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
So this chart is a history of ending bonded indebtedness. Just for some highlights, you have the blue, which is your general obligation bonds, your orange is your special assessment bonds, and then your gray is your revenue bonds. So for your special assessments, there's about 2.4 million primarily for street, water, and sewer infrastructure improvements. Again, for special assessments. And then you've got 7.78 million for GEO bonds, and those are also for street improvements, public safety purchases, and flood control levy repairs. And then $12 million for revenue bonds, and those are for water sewer improvements and water pollution control plant improvements as well. So, looking ahead, we're gonna highlight some of the projects. I apologize, the font is small because there's so many things. I should have put this on a couple of slides. So street maintenance and construction, I won't note everything there. I'll hit a few highlights, but we're gonna continue to see annual street maintenance construction contract work. Those are the panel replacements, repairs you've seen on 18th Street by Bel Air School. You've seen that annual contract work pay for what's happening on Gulfview right now. And so that is contracted work that we hired on to do concrete repairs throughout the community. 2.6 million, we anticipate, will be needed left for the Benjamin project overall that will be wrapping up. 1.1 million for Michigan Avenue that will also be wrapping up for this next fiscal year. And then there's that 2.5 million, and that's for community decided street repair. So that's half of the five. We're not gonna be able to do, just to be able to do the full 5 million in a year. I don't think that's possible. That's a lot of work to bid, design, and build. And plus, we have to go through the process to determine what those improvements are. And then you'll see some other work that we have there for MicroSeal, Armor Coat, Safe Streets For All, and then some miscellaneous paving projects and new developments. Water sewer infrastructure, the big ones there are the West Water Truman Plant Upgrades. So that would be the storage tank, collector well, some pretty significant improvements happening out there. 3.5 million for the grit removal building improvements. Part of that is funded through ARPA dollars, as you'll see later when I'll highlight some of those. We're gonna be replacing the sewer from Forther Monroe to 2000 Logan. We do have in the budget, I'm gonna touch on these, I put asterisks by them, so the Highway 35 Interceptor, as well as Omaha Avenue Lift Station. So those are included in the budget. If you remember our previous discussion we've had, the direction was to keep it in the budget. However, the rate increases to pay for that are a separate item considered by the council. And we are gonna be working with the council to get up to speed and educate you on our overall master plan for that, go through that process, and then you'll be looking at water and sewer rate increases separately. So you have not done that. So that is not funded. But it's in the budget so that in the case the council does want to raise rates to pay for that, you certainly can. That's why it is in this budget. But obviously, if the rate increases are not approved later as a separate item, it just won't get done. But not putting them in the budget really didn't give the council any flexibility to make that determination, as you see fit. So that's why I put asterisks by there. Administration, public safety, and flood control, there's a few items there. We are gonna be getting some new windows in this admin building. Our staff will appreciate that. It gets quite cold in the wintertime, so we'll hopefully see some improvements to some efficiencies there. And also, we have been replacing our HVAC systems here, our furnace and air conditioning systems, just as they've been breaking down, and we've been replacing those here the last few years. We've got some roof replacements at Fire Station 1 and Station 2, as well as the Police Department roof. And then we've got just 438,000 for flood control recertification work this year. Parks, Recreation, Trail Development, we've got some landscape master plan dollars there, some continued work on Johnson's Park that will be wrapping up. And then we've got that 1.4 million for the team lockers at Tazooka Park, again, that we're partnering with the school and the college for that. And that is also a donor-funded project as well. Is there any questions, Council?
210,000 for windows, was that a bid we got?
That is an estimate that we've got. I think we did get some ideas and estimates. Lyle led that process.
Yes, Councilman, that was a bid we got a number of years ago. Of course, that was pre-COVID, so we've added some cost to that at the time. So I think that's a pretty solid number. Of course, there's- Of course, there's a multitude of different vintages of types of windows that we could get. So that's the amount we're going to try and work with.
We've pushed this ahead for the last few years, but I think it's, it's time we need to get the windows replaced. So a few other items and changes that we've got, and I'll remind everybody of this. I went through this when we did our budget review session. So we did eliminate the assistant city administrator position, as well as the management analyst position in the admin. But we did add an HR director position. We changed two police officer positions, two full-time C S O positions. In public works, we did add one full-time employee to the street maintenance department. Also under public works, we've got asset management here for two hundred and twenty-six thousand. Concrete saw and an anti-ice unit for the street division, some portable truck lifts for the fleet department. Parks and Rec has a pickup, skating equipment, concessionist trailer, as well as irrigation in Central Park. And then, of course, we annually see the purchase of three patrol cars. We rotate those out. Just to hit on some of the ARPA dollars again. We are, we did build into this budget eighty thousand dollars to go to the senior center to help with their HVAC system. We do have just over a million dollars for the W P C grit removal improvements. We've got a hundred thousand for admin building, ADA and security upgrades. That's to the entrances to the, to the building and to make it more accessible. We have a hundred and eighty thousand for the Aqua Venture pool heater. As you know. They, one did go out this last year, so we're planning ahead to make sure that this other one gets replaced as well, because they have reached the end of their life. Fire station restroom for eighty-nine thousand dollars, and then we have our network battery backup system for fifty thousand dollars.
Andy, does that close out any remaining ARPA funds? Are they all committed at this point?
What's not on there. Is street improvements. So there's about four hundred and thirty roughly thousand left. That we just put towards street improvements, so we can dedicate that towards street maintenance by contract. We can put it towards a future mill and overlay. We just have to have it allocated and budgeted to be spent. To comply with, with federal law on those funds.
So that would be it then?
Yes.
With that addition, okay.
So this is a snapshot of our long-term financial plan. So the blue is our fund balance, general fund ending balance, and then the orange line is our tax levies. You can see they're pretty directly correlated. As you see your fund balance go up, you're going to see your tax levy go down overall. So again, we'll see that increase here in twenty-four, twenty-five. Because we did reduce our fund balance and paying this off. So all those things do have a consequence. But it's always nice to be able to see this and, and see where, where our fund balance goes. And again, that does help our, our tax levy to go down. There's a whole bunch of formulas to go along with this. If you want to go into details with it, that's certainly something we can do for you. And I guess with that, I will take questions from council. Or if there's anything you want to discuss in more detail. All division heads, they're all here today. They can speak to their budgets. They can get into as much detail as you'd like after something you'd like to touch on.
When, when we, with the parks budget, we talked about eliminating the Keno funds that were being used to. And that's been taken care of.
That is in this budget as well. So we've got that, Keno funds will be, a hundred percent Keno funds will be funding the Trail Connector on East Norfolk Avenue. So yes, councilman.
Yeah, so the, it got, took out of the, took out of the parks budget then, right?
Correct.
The, our original budget meeting, I think we were at. Six point one percent was the projected property tax value increase. We ended at, I think it was eight point two, was it?
It's the other way around. We were projecting eight, or, yeah, yeah, you're right. Sorry, councilman, yeah.
And so I just want Randy to touch on, so some of that, the difference between the six point one, eight point two went to mill levy decrease, and then the rest went to the beginning fund balance, correct?
Yes, we did have a one percent levy rate reduction, and now we got over a one point one cent levy rate reduction. And the rest of that went to fund balance, to try and get our fund balance closer to the G F O A recommended minimum. We were there a couple of years ago, and last year we paid this building off, called the bonds and paid them off early. And that put us about a million dollars below that. I think this year we made up about four hundred thousand of that, so I think we're about six hundred thousand low, if I remember right.
Any other questions for Andy while he's here? Thank you, Andy. I would just say, you hinted at it earlier, but the amount of work that goes into the budget writing process by. Staff and division heads, working with you and Randy and Sheila. It's, it's a process, it really is, but we do appreciate the hard work and the creativity that goes into it. I think what has resulted again this year, I think it's consistent with past budgets. In recent years is a responsible and prudent budget while, while still being growth minded and focused on. Targeted investments in infrastructure and quality of life. I think that's where we want to be. So I appreciate the staff's work again. We are here today, this is, this is purely a public hearing, so there won't be any action taken by the council. But it, it is a public hearing to receive input on the budget and that process. So at this point, we will open up to any comments that any members of the public might have.
Jim McKenzie, I'm sure you probably weren't expecting me to come say anything. Couple things, a lot of things. This budget shows a twenty-two million dollars of new debt being issued by the city. Brings the total city debt up to sixty-four million dollars. In fiscal year twenty twenty-one, the total debt was approximately twenty-two million. Debt has tripled, almost tripled in three years. Couple things on your presentation. Of the Columbus debt, I believe twenty-five million of that is serviced by the half percent of their one and a half percent sales tax. City doesn't have such a funding mechanism. When you compare your debt to Kearney, Kearney's population is thirty-two percent greater than Norfolk. I suspect in the coming years Norfolk will be the highest debt per capita of any first-class city. General obligation bonds, when you showed one of those charts. Where the Aqua Venture was there and it came back down, you had a dedicated occupation tax to pay for that. You don't have that anymore. Now you're using general funds. So you are now at record levels of general obligation debt without a dedicated funding source. Important aspects to think about. The property tax increase the city is requesting this year is kept artificially low by borrowing money to pay its bills instead of using current revenue. Here's a summary list that I would consider routine maintenance expenses that the city is issuing debt for this year. These items should have been planned for and budgeted for. The two point five million dollars of CHAF for street repair, that's just general street repair. Warning sirens, fire one and fire two roof repair, CAD R M S upgrade. Police roof repair, animal pound, police in-car video and body cam. That adds up to three point nine six four million dollars of debt that you're issuing that I would consider. General items that you should be able to pay for out of your budget. Had these items been included in your regular budget, your levy, your property tax levy would have had to increase fifty-seven percent more than what is shown. It would be point four six instead of point two nine. Let me repeat that. The items that are not included in the regular budget and paid, used debt to pay for, you would have had to increase your levy by an additional fifty-seven percent. Why are you borrowing so much money? Because your previous spending decisions have consequences. When you spend five point four million dollars in CHAF and ARPA funds on the River slash Johnson Park project, instead of on streets. You then have to borrow money to do actual street repair. The First Street Bridge was only thirty-nine years old and rated in fair condition when you decided to replace it, as are many bridges in the city. Other bridges in the city in fair condition are much, much older than thirty-nine years, are not being replaced. The five point four million dollars in that bridge and also used for rerouting storm sewer so it didn't dump in right by the rapids. And building a new roundabout was strictly to facilitate the river project, strictly for that. When you spend three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars of CHAF money for downtown parking lots, instead of using B P D money, which is intended for that purpose. You have to borrow money for actual street repair. When you buy a third skid steer, when you already have two of them that are hardly ever used, you have to borrow money for regular expenses. When you construct Benjamin Avenue as though you have a bottomless checkbook by undergrounding all the utilities, installing high-end decorative lights. Installing custom cut fencing. Installing an enormous amount of stamped concrete and expensive landscaping, you have to borrow money for regular expenses. Who's going to take care of that landscaping now and, and what cost? We can't take care of what we already have. When you budget eighty-four thousand dollars a year for public art and hundreds of thousands of dollars of travel and conference, you have to borrow money for regular expenses. When you budget seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for landscaping, you have to borrow for regular expenses. When you give away millions and millions of dollars, property tax dollars in the form of T I F. You rob the community of the funds it needs for basic services. You then have to borrow for regular expenses. I could go on and on. Your, my point is, your spending decisions have consequences, and those consequences are ballooning amount of city debt. Based on your capital improvement plan, I expect the city debt to reach eighty million dollars in twenty-four, twenty-five, and probably a hundred million dollars shortly after that. Again, you will quickly be the highest in the state per capita. You can try and say it's just a phase we're going through. It's not. It's burying your hand, burying your head in the sand. The city is drowning in debt from out of control spending and zero fiscal control. Now on to a few other budget topics. How did you come to a consensus of a three point five percent COLA without any public meeting? It was four percent in the previous July meeting. With one dissenting councilperson. Now it's suddenly three and a half percent, and there was zero public discussion? How does that happen without violating the Open Meetings Act? On page seventeen of the budget, you itemize new expenses that are not included in the individual budget meeting. Eighty-one thousand five hundred for undergrounding power along Northwestern Avenue. Eighty-one thousand five hundred dollars for Central Park improvements. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for East Norfolk Avenue Trail. How does this happen without any public discussion or opportunity for input? Why on earth is undergrounding power along Northwestern Avenue now a priority item above everything else? Where did that come from? The total of these items is four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Those items together equal six percent of your total property tax asking, and these had no public discussion. Doesn't that warrant some discussion? Add another three hundred thousand to that four hundred and thirteen, and you have seven hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, and that's enough to pay the annual payment on the police expansion project. If it's eight million dollars and amortized for fifteen years. You can easily pay for that police spacing expansion if it's a priority, but obviously it's not. Let's talk about salary increases on some of the top city positions that have gone way beyond the three point five percent COLA. When I examined the budget, it seemed some management position received large increases, but the rank and file did not. Here's a few examples. Nineteen twenty, fiscal year nineteen twenty, the city administrator was the grade thirty-sixth. Now it's a grade thirty-nine. Top guy gets three grade increases in that period of time, up to max when he tops out at two hundred and five thousand dollars. Street manager, that grade, pay grade went from a twenty-two to a twenty-eight, tops out at a hundred and eighteen thousand. Parks and Rec director went from a twenty-six to a thirty, tops out at a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Economic development director, which was blank at the time, slash, shared with the city administrator, so it really wasn't filled, but the person who took that position went from an eighteen to a thirty. But when you look at other directors. Public Works Director, they're still, they went from a thirty-three to a thirty-three, no change. Library Director, twenty-four to a twenty-four, no change. Fire Chief, twenty-nine to twenty-nine, no change. Police Chief got one grade, thirty to a thirty-one. City Attorney, thirty-three to a thirty-three. Water and Sewer Director, same. So why did those guys get those big increases? And I find it interesting that the rank and file didn't, didn't get increases like the top positions did. You look at the police officer, they only went from an eighteen to a nineteen, but the top guy's got big increases. Lastly, your budget document says the city Norfolk has the third lowest levy rate amongst first-class cities in the state of Nebraska. That statement is intentionally misleading. You're omitting the airport budget from your levy and comparing yourself to other cities that include the airport budget in their levy. If you include the airport budget, which you have control over, in the city's levy, Norfolk is probably between eleventh and thirteenth on that chart. At the very least, very least, be honest when you communicate with your citizens. My main concern is the path, fiscal path the city is on. I don't feel the council has a grasp on the gravity of the situation, nor what got you to this point. You cannot just approve every ten thousand or a hundred thousand idea, a hundred thousand dollar idea that comes along. These add up to real money. When you design street projects, you cannot say the sky is the limit. We do not have unlimited funds. That's why you're having to borrow money for everything. You've got to take a step back and evaluate every request. Lastly, I would hope that the press would communicate these concerns to the public. The fourth pillar requires unbiased reporting of all views, so the public can discern for themselves how to interpret information. When you present the government view, the public is not served and the public loses trust. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to comment on the budget? Okay. Hearing and seeing no one, we will move on to item number nine, and I'll open this public hearing to. Review the city of Norfolk's fiscal year two thousand twenty-three to twenty-four proprietary budget, including water, sewer, solid waste and storm, stormwater budgets. And Andy, or any comment, any further commentary on, on that, or Randy? No, okay, all right. So we do just, as process, have to separate these budgets out during this, to be presented for the public hearing. So that's why we're doing three separate hearings. Is that correct?
Yeah, if there's specific things you'd like to touch on in those proprietary funds, it's something we can certainly do.
Okay, this is also a public hearing. Anyone which is make comment? Okay. Hearing no one, we'll move to item number ten. And we'll open this public hearing to receive comments regarding changing the tax requests for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal years from the amounts for the, from the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Any commentary on that, Randy or Andy?
I can make a few general comments on this to introduce it. The. Three funds we levy property tax in are the vehicle parking district fund, which is strictly against the downtown Norfolk area in the vehicle parking district. They always, and then we have the debt service fund, the general fund. Vehicle parking district always levies a maximum thirty-five cents allowed by law. Their assessed value increased three point three seven percent from the prior year, and their property tax increased accordingly, going from. One hundred and one thousand six ninety-five to one hundred and five thousand one twenty-one, which was a three thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollar increase. Debt service fund property tax remains unchanged, same as last year at one million twenty-one thousand one seventy-three. And the general fund property tax increases two hundred and eighty-five thousand nine twenty. City's assessed valuation increased eight point three two percent. And the budget was prepared to allow for a decrease in levy rate of a little over one point one cents. And then after adding the one percent county treasure commission, the general fund property tax levy increases two hundred and eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Going from five million six forty-one, four fifty last year to five million nine thirty, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars this year. The levy rate goes from point three oh four to three oh three last. The levy rate goes from .304 to 303 last year, .293114 this year. So I said that's a little over a 1.1 cent decrease in levy rate. So to answer any questions?
Thank you, Andy, any questions? Okay, any public comments? Okay. Hearing none, just a few general comments here. I'm not going to try to respond to some of the hyperbolic things that were laid out before us. But in general, I want to just make a statement about investments and debt. I think some are trying to paint the picture that hair is on fire, and we heard it, out-of-control spending, all of that. I think the city administrators' budget presentation showed, demonstrated that that is not the case, that these are strategic investments, that in fact, if we waited to have all the money in the bank for, we'd be waiting a long time. And 10 years, 15 years, 20 years down the road, waiting on something like Benjamin Avenue, first of all, it's not realistic. Second of all, how much more expensive would a project like that be? I like to use the example of the state of Nebraska Highway Expressway system. In 1988, the state had created a plan for establishing 600 miles of four-lane highways connecting major communities to each other. It's a great plan, just never got paid for. The state had a policy in place that would completely pay-as-you-go on highway construction. And so the 200, $200 million price tag for 600 miles of four-lane highways, which was supposed to be done in 15 years, just never happened. And so here we are with about a third of the system still unfinished, and to complete it will be more than $2 billion. Highway 275 expansion itself will be 300-plus million dollars. So there is a necessity sometimes to borrow money to do big investment, big infrastructure investments, to avoid cost inflation, and to put in the investment to create economic opportunities that hopefully come from those investments. So I just wanted to make a general comment in that regard. I don't, I don't think that this budget, again, is by any means reckless. In fact, like I said before, I think it's responsible and prudent and continues a tradition of being growth-minded and focused in targeted investments in infrastructure and quality of life. So again, I'm proud of the staff for working creatively to, to put this before us and to serve the citizens. And if there's no other comments, council or otherwise, that's all that's on the council agenda.
I just want to say, the 4% to 3.5%, Shane, Shane wants the council to be unified in the budget and wants the council to be unified in the decisions we make. So the difference between 3.5% and 4% comes from Shane wanting the council to be unified, and we're moving together as a council. So that's where that change came from, it was driven by the leadership of Shane to say, let's, let's, let's drop it to 3.5%. So that's where that came from.
Any other comments? Okay, if not, I will close the public hearings, and we are adjourned.